Please rise for the flag. Put a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Works Session Meeting of March 5, 2020 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance set in course, date, time, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act and roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Okay, Dr. Toback?
So we have quite a few things to talk about tonight, but we wanted to start the meeting by talking about a topic that is very pressing in this community and every community. Today, we had our first planning meeting to discuss procedures regarding the coronavirus. We had nineteen Wayne Township public school staff members in attendance, as well as the Wayne Township Health Officer, Mary Ann O’Rahello, and Detective Captain Chris Whittig of Wayne Police Department, and also the Office of Emergency Management. As the coronavirus continues to spread across the globe, and more cases are confirmed here in the United States, there is a need for every school system to plan and consider how we might respond to a variety of scenarios. The goal here in Wayne is to strike a balance. We don’t want to overreact and we don’t want to underreact. The district held a number of planning meetings this week, and I’d like to share some of our work with the Board of Ed and with the public. So, one effective way to prevent the spread of illness is to limit contact between people. Schools require close interactions with thousands of people. As a result, school closings are a scenario we may face because it is one tool that governments have at their disposal to stop the spread of coronavirus. As you may have read, the strategy is currently being used in other countries, and also some school districts here in the United States. Looking at our options, if there is a mandated school shutdown, we learned that the New Jersey Department of Education does require 180 days of school, which is not surprising, but the other part is there are some things that they are considering as options to the 180-day requirement. So what I’d like to do is call the board’s attention to a calendar they’ve provided to. So ultimately, there’s a lot that depends on what happens in the coming weeks. So we really don’t know what the future will be. What we do know is depending on the timing, the district could meet the 180-day requirement. So what I did is I gave you a calendar, and what we did was we mapped out basically if there were, say, school was shut down in two weeks in March. You can see, if you go along here, there’s a number of days that the district could take back. So in the end, you wind up with 22 days that we could absorb if there was a shutdown and we stuck with the 180-day requirement. So like I said, a lot depends on the future and things we don’t know about, but you could see that you would be able to give up spring break, right? You would be able to give up some extra days that we have coming back to us over Memorial Day because of the fact that we had very few school closings this year. You could see that the school year could be extended to June 30th, and in combination with all that, we would be able to absorb and still meet the 180-day requirement, so absorb 22 days to meet the requirement. So that’s an important factor. The New Jersey Department of Education is looking at this as an emergency situation, is considering the time of the year when there could be a shutdown. The other possibility is if, say, there were a shutdown, but this shutdown were in June, and that’s pretty clear, there’d be no way we could make those dates back, right? So the timing of that all really doesn’t matter. And we also have the issue, the teachers are under contract to work 180 days, so there’s a lot that would have to be worked out, but we are working on it. Like I said, our meeting today was very constructive. The other reality is that we do have the technology in place to continue instruction. So as far as the district is concerned, we know for sure that all of our students from sixth through twelfth grade have Chromebooks, so there’s no question they have the resources and the ability to continue instruction. We also know that in the event that a student does not have Wi-Fi access, we do have some pocket-sized Wi-Fi hotspots that we would be able to give to students if they need Wi-Fi access. We also have all of our high school staff members that have Chromebooks, so the fact that we’re not Chromebooks, they have the YOBS, the Lenovo YOBS. So they have computers that are issued by the district. Our middle school teachers do not have computers, our elementary school students do not necessarily, they don’t have computers, and our elementary teachers do not have laptops or anything like that. So there is a situation at the elementary level, but it’s also an age-appropriate situation, in other words, it would not be a normal thing for children of that age to be using Chromebooks on a regular basis or receiving instruction online. So that’s something we have to work on, and we’re going to continue to plan for that. I also learned today that there are some options that the Department of Ed is considering. So I’m a part of a coronavirus task force, and I participate in a conference call with Commission of Education and a number of representatives from various organizations around the state to talk about what’s happening here in New Jersey and what’s happening in our bordering states. So there’s a lot of planning that’s going on, and the course of action that we’re following here is pretty similar to what’s happening in lots of other districts. So I think that overall, we’re fairly well situated, but we do need more work to move ahead with some of the things we’d like to do. One of the things that we’re proposing this evening, and because like I said, this is happening so rapidly, what we’d like to do is move ahead with perhaps some professional development days that would allow the district to train our teachers. So our teachers are in various stages of preparation when it comes to delivering online instruction. So some are very adept at using Google Classroom, others not as much. We want to make sure that everyone’s ready to go. So we’re considering some professional development days for our staff members, which would lead to a half-day for students. So we would not normally make this recommendation or ask the board to consider that, but it was a very important issue. In the event that we do have to close down, we’d like to continue the educational process, and we think that that would be carried out best by having our own teachers deliver instruction to our students. The other part about it is there’s also, as far as, when you’re dealing with a situation like this, there’s also the sort of mental health aspect, the wellness aspect, where you have to consider creating avenues for teachers and students to continue their work together. And so by allowing that to happen, by training teachers, students would probably be in a much better place personally because ultimately, they’re still able to keep contact with their teachers, they’re still able to continue working on things they know they’re going to need during high school, things that they’re going to need when they get to college, and at every good level, things that they’re going to need for the future. So whether it’s reading activities or being able to connect with teachers. The other thing we learned today is that if you have an enterprise version of Google, which we have, there is a feature called Google Hangouts, okay? And so the good news about that is Google Hangouts is something that, there’s the free version, which is fairly limited, and then there’s a paid version. So the nice thing that happened was Google allowed us to use, in every district in the United States, we’re able to use the paid version for free. So what that does is that opens up a whole lot of different opportunities for online instruction. It allows teachers to do video classes, and so one person can connect with 250 other users. So every teacher, I mean, it wouldn’t certainly be 250, but maybe 25 or 28 or something like that, so you’d be able to connect with your classroom, and you could teach lessons on video, which is also a really, really nice thing. So we also have the ability, we assessed our ability in the business office to continue operations. So one thing, in a shutdown, we would certainly be able to continue all the functions of our big business office from remote access. So our technology allows for us to pay bills, to continue with payroll, things like that. The other thing I’d like to just mention is that, so throughout this process, we’re following all the guidance from the World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control, and any guidance from state and local health officials that we’re in contact with. The local health official was a very helpful pick because there are some key questions that we talked about. For example, what happens if someone is identified as possibly having coronavirus or someone who is confirmed to have a case of coronavirus, right? So the health official basically laid out exactly how they really take charge of the situation, and that they conducted an investigation, and we can read about this going on right now. In the event that someone in the community identifies having coronavirus, there is a lengthy process of investigation where ultimately, all the people that the person had contact with, all the places that they went, are all identified, and then people are notified depending on circumstances, and then an assessment is made about the threat to public health. So there is, we have a very good partner in the Wayne Health Department, in our Office of Emergency Management, the Police Department. All those partnerships are really coming into play right now, and all the employees from the township have been very helpful in helping us to move ahead. We have another meeting, a district-wide meeting planned for next week. We have a letter going out to parents tomorrow. We have a letter that went out to all staff members today to sort of talk to them about some of the main issues that exist out there and how the district would proceed with different situations. The other big issue that is important is, I know there’s some kinds of rumors of trips being canceled, and there’s all kinds of other things. We have a lot of out-of-state trips, we have in-state trips, we have lots of events. The Center for Disease Control provides guidance for large-scale events. So for example, the Wayne Valley SDA, that involves thousands of people making their way in and out of the school. So there’s procedures and things that we would follow in a large-scale event, or there’s other things like plays and other events that are hosted at elementary schools that aren’t quite as big, but still have a lot of people together, so we’re going to follow the same guides for that. So we have a fairly comprehensive plan that still needs to be fleshed out a little bit further, so there’s still more that needs to be done. But hopefully, all this planning is not needed. That’s our greatest hope, but we do have a lot going on as far as our preparations. So, to better news, unless the board has any questions about the coronavirus preparation or any of the other work that we’ve been doing related to that, it’s a lot to talk about. All right, so there’s other really exciting news. So Niche.com came out with their rankings, and so we’re excited to report a few great ones. One, Wayne Hills High School is identified as the number one of all the high schools in New Jersey, a best high school for athletics, which is pretty exciting. They’re also identified as one of the top public high schools, and best high schools for STEM in the United States, and one of the best public high schools for teachers. In other words, it’s a great place to work if you’re a teacher. Wayne Valley High School also scored very well in athletics, also one of the top public high schools, one of the best high schools for STEM in New Jersey, and also a great place to work, best public high schools for teachers. So they did pretty well in the Niche rankings, and so that’s great for public high schools. There’s other exciting news. So we received more recognition. There’s a Schools to Watch initiative, and what it is, it’s a form that identifies middle schools across the United States that are high-performing to be considered for this procedures recognition. They have to be academically excellent, evident in student performance, and standardized test scores, curriculum, and highly interactive instruction that is witnessed in the classroom by observers who come to the district to watch the instruction. The school has to be developmentally responsive, so has to be sensitive to the unique developmental challenges of middle school students, have clear plans, and available resources to support middle school students. And the school has to be socially equitable, which means there has to be a demonstrated pattern, you have to show that they’re democratic and fair, providing every student with high-quality teachers, resources, and supports. So to apply for recognition, the school has to complete an eight-page report identifying how the school beats the established Schools to Watch over it. Along with that, there’s a two-page future plans report. There’s also additional years of test scores that show student growth, a complete explanation of the student and staff population, and the staff had to take an anonymous self-scoring assessment that was sent to the Schools to Watch team to offer a true picture of the school. So all said and done, after the process, George Washington Middle School was identified as a School to Watch, which is very exciting. They’ll be recognized at the state level on March 13th at King University, and then during the middle-level education conference in Washington, D.C. in June. There’s only two schools that were selected this year in New Jersey as Schools to Watch. That’s very exciting, and the school has to reapply every three years to meet the status. So that’s really quite some recognition, and very exciting for the staff, for students, everybody, the whole George Washington School community, it’s really quite an honor. Just a reminder, the online registration for KRAP will open on March 20th, and will remain open until April 1st. At 9:00 p.m., parents will be notified about enrollment no later than May 15th, because KRAP is not first come, first served. And as far as the HIV report goes, during this reporting period, the nine incidents reported as HIV, after thorough investigation, none of the reported incidents were found to be actual cases of HIV.
Good news, thank you both. I’d like to go right into your presentation.
You’ll go right into the presentation, okay? So what we’d like to do, since I’ve been working in the district, we have collaboratively developed four or five goals that we establish each year. Very important to have goals. So we have district goals that we carry out, and we’ve been very successful with the system of goals. What we’d like to do is provide the district and the board with a mid-year goal report. So I’d like to turn things over to Dr. Reichman to start it, and I’ll add some comments in as we go along through the presentation.
Last August, Dr. Toback and I presented to you the district goals for the year, and you have a packet with the four goals. This packet details all of the steps and a timeline for achieving the goals. Time surely flies when you’re having fun because we’re starting our seventh month at school, and it has been a great school year, a lot of fun. And I’d like to just share how we have been successfully achieving these goals. The first goal is our wellness goal. We’re in the second year of our wellness goal. You know, with everything that is happening in the news right now, now more than ever, is the time to really say we have to do everything possible to minimize anxiety and stress for staff, for students. School is stressful in itself, but there are so many extenuating circumstances outside of our control which contribute to that. So this is something that we are really committed to maintaining. We’ve offered a host of wellness workshops and training for staff, students, and parents on strategies for increasing mindfulness, reducing stress, and improving overall health, fitness, and nutrition. This year, we really targeted staff. We continue to offer parent workshops, we continue in the schools based on needs, student demographics, issues that arise. We bring in experts from the field, we have our nurses work with students, our counselors prioritize and focus the information that they share out in the group say form. But one thing that we’ve really noticed, as we’ve been sponsoring workshops for our staff members, they fill up very quickly, and we generate wait lists. So, you know, to Dr. Toback and I, it speaks volumes about the need and that this is something that we should continue to prioritize. I have also recognized that as we, by training with these practices with our staff, you see how it carries over to the classrooms, and you know how teachers are just more aware of how important it is to take time in the classrooms to just really emphasize best practices and demonstrate to kids that this is something that everybody should do on a regular basis. So that’s really it for this goal, but it’s a goal that we plan to maintain and continue with next year because the need continues to grow, and it obviously varies month to month, day to day, but we’ve been addressing it on a regular basis based on feedback that comes to us. Can you advance to the second slide? This goal is our ESL program expansion plan. This has been a growing population of students in the Wayne Township public schools. This past year, we have added staff and new sections in our elementary schools. It’s really been very helpful in increasing program participation. It’s always important to parents to be able to maintain their students in their home schools. It’s, you know, we have a neighborhood school system, and parents really value that. So now more students are being serviced in their home schools, and we’re able to collect longitudinal data, and we’re seeing much greater gains. Kids are getting serviced exactly the way they should be, which is very nice. This is year two of us using the Linkit software program. We’re using it all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. It has been something that we’ve been used to gather student data and make informed decisions about targeted instruction. We’ve been able to establish a digital portfolio that is moving with students and growing, obviously, as they advance to the grades. Our assessment practices have been expanded, and we are seeing improvement in student achievement. There are assessments offered through Linkit that are very closely aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. It’s an opportunity to take practice tests and for us to evaluate consistently across the district and compare ourselves to other schools using the software to just demonstrate progress towards mastery of standards. Having these conversations and taking time for teachers to sit down and look at their student data has really increased educator productivity. One enhancement of the software that was rolled out mid-year, and which has been very interesting, is the ability to filter CUSP kits. The software takes the evidence statements, which is individual student information provided through the state when we get back our testing data. And, you know, we have been focused on looking at kids who are falling below proficiency levels. There are many kids who are in the proficient range, and what we can actually filter and see now, if they were to answer a single question, maybe two, in a specific standard or skill area, they can advance to being advanced proficient. So we’re looking at this very discreet and specific data, and then just using it to maybe give increased training, practice, and then assessing in an area, and we’ll be able to see when we get our information back this year, how it manifested. And, you know, overall, we have really streamlined our data-centric operational tasks and making more and more decisions based on data, which is nice. And our fourth goal has been a great source of pride for me and a lot of fun this year. We are working on our early childhood expansion plan and our transition to full-day kindergarten. This is part of a two-year goal. The priority this year has been getting our early childhood center renovation progress underway. It’s deep in progress, and it’s been a lot of fun. We have had the opportunity to pick out everything from door knobs to floor tiles, plan out the room, and now we’re at the point where we’re really, you know, working to identify what materials we have in the buildings that we’re moving over, what materials need to be purchased. We have just posted an advertisement and had a large applicant pool for our new early childhood center principal position. We’ve really identified all of the staffing needs, and in the next few months, we’ll be doing the hiring, and very excited to share that we will have an early summer ribbon cutting ceremony and a late summer open house. When we meet on the 12th, we have lots of pictures and plans to share with the board. And that is...
The other thing for the board is, we’re going to show you some photos, and we’re going to work towards a day. We can actually keep them on an early tour, so you can see the facility. Sometimes later this spring will be a very nice thing. I think you’ll be very impressed by what we see. It’s really, it’s coming together. It’s just, it’s actually a beautiful facility, so we would have guessed in such a short amount of time, so much progress we made. It’s really, it’s coming together, yeah. Any questions from the board about the district goals? No?
Thank you. Mr. Moffett?
Okay, this is a work session, so we do have a section of the budget that is discussed and is subject to change. There’s no vote tonight, it’ll be at a future meeting in March. So there is a change and a revision to O. PWS School Resource Finance has to do with tuition rates specifically for extended day program. This was discussed in detail today in the Finance Committee, and based on feedback and support from the Finance Committee, we will be making the, I would say, the amendment or revision to keep tuition rates the same as this year based on, like I said, a thorough review of the information, financial information related to program fees, income, as well as expenditures. The idea would also be to include raises for the individuals that are charged against this account, so that would be also accommodated in the existing tuition rate structure. Again, it’s the same rates as 1920, and again, it’s based on review and use of the surplus in that fund. So that will be amended for the future and adjusted on the next work item. Any questions?
Do you agree with that, Dr. Toback? The committee chose not to move it forward this year?
That’s fine.
And so it’s okay that we revise that on tonight’s agenda?
You can use the surplus, and that’s fine.
Okay, that was our recommendation. Any discussion further on that?
The next change is in the Emergent section under Administrative. We are adding a number three, which reads, “Resolve that Board of Education authorizes District Administration to Plan Two Minimal Days for Teacher Training Regarding a Potential Declared Emergency.” That will be added in the Emergent Administrative area, again, number three. Moving on to T, Emergent Human Resources, we will be adding, I should say revising, number, item six, number five, ID number 4891, Para, Wayne Hills, FM LA, unpaid with benefits from February 24, 2020 to February 28, 2020, plus March 16, 2020, to June 5, 2020, medical leave. We will be withdrawing number six, which is ID 2678, OP4, Wayne Valley, FM LA, unpaid with benefits, March 1, 2020 through May 8, 2020, half-days medical. On item 11, we are pulling number two, which is the Assistant Coach for lacrosse, for further considerations. We are adding number five to that same item, number 11, which will read, number five, again, Morgan Mendy, Assistant Volleyball/Boys Coach, Step Four, with a stipend amount of $6,367, account number 11-402-100-100-16-51. And we are adding number 13, which is an approval of student office assistance, adding number two to that item, which reads, “Student ID number 1588680981, location Technology, March 6, 2020 through June 18, 2020, account number 1100252-110-70-005.” And the last change is in the area of X, Emergent School Resource Legal. We are adding approval of settlement agreement with WEA, and it reads, “Resolve that Board of Education upon the recommendation of Superintendent, hereby approves a settlement agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Education Association dated March 3, 2020, and settlement of arbitration docket number AR-2020-193, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of settlement to further implement same.”
Thank you very much. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a moment?
I’ll move. Second.
Mr. Bubba, Mr. DeVano, thank you.
Good evening, Mark Clip, before meeting, I’m Chris Harris. In reference to Dr. Toback speaking about the coronavirus, has the New Jersey Department of Education, have any communications with the school district, maybe referencing to possibly waiving the 180-day schools if it comes closer to the end? I don’t know if they’ve gotten in touch with us, or maybe we should contact them to see and maybe be proactive and see if they have something in plans to waive that 180-day rule. Thank you.
Mr. Pavla, Mr. Bubba, thank you. We had committees that met this evening. Who shall I speak to? Mr. Duffy?
Sure. Technology and Safety Met this evening with Mr. Bubba, Mr. Pavla, Mr. Bizard, and myself. One of the things that we did go over in technology was the preparation for the coronavirus as far as online instruction and Chromebooks and whatnot, as Dr. Toback has pretty much already said. We went over our situation as far as our security cameras, what we have and what we need. We have 400 since our last safety and security referendum in place. We’ve converted 300 over so that they’re compatible with the system, and we have a need for a lot more that the committee has decided to bring to the entire board. That’s it.
Next. Mrs. Parra?
The Education Committee met this evening, myself, Mrs. Scher, Mrs. Lamar, my fellow assistant superintendent, Donna Reichman, along with Dana Sur, Suzanne Kerensky, and Jennifer. We reviewed the February 6, 2020, Education Committee Minutes, and then we did a review of those items that were... items that were going to appear on the agenda this evening pertaining to education. We went over several policy items, and then we discussed name change to the district SOAR program, denoting differences to daytime and after-school opponents. We revisited providing college coaching workshops to our students in the district, and we discussed procedures for distance learning in the event of school closures. Thank you.
Mrs. Albinis?
The Finance Committee met tonight with Mr. Moffett, the Business Administrator, and Ginny DeMarco, the Assistant Business Administrator, Board Members present, and Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Kazan, and myself. We got an update on the ESUP two, the ESUP number two update is still in third-party review. We got an update on the Preakness Early Childhood Center project. It's moving along. There's been no change orders to date, and the administration is happy with the progress. We did a brief overview of the 2020-21 budget update, which I believe all board members got a copy of what will be discussed at the budget, public budget meeting next week. There were no budget transfers. We reviewed agenda items. The one item that we did spend some lengthy conversation in the last couple of meetings was rates for next year's before and after care based on funds that were available in the budget. We felt due to the increasing cost of childcare for parents that it was appropriate that we do not raise rates at this time. Teachers will still be given increases, things still will be done. There's some exploratory options for the program, but there would be no increase in the fees for parents for next year. And that's the update.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the emergent portion of the agenda. R. Can I get them over?
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. Bubba, Mr. Giordano. Go, please.
Mrs. Albinis?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavla?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
T, Emergent Human Resource Items. Mr. Bubba?
I'll second.
Mrs. Putta?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the education items? Go, please.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavla?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albinis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
T, Emergent Human Resource Items. Mr. Bubba?
I'll second.
Mrs. Putta? Any discussion on the Human Resource items?
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Sorry, did just someone have a comment?
No, go ahead.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavla?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albinis?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
U, Policy. Can I get them over? Oh, I'm sorry. V. No, I'm looking at the wrong sheet. Okay, Finance, School Resource. Can I get them over?
I'll move.
Mrs. Putta? Mrs. Albinis? Any discussion?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavla?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albinis?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Final. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get them over?
I'll move it.
Mr. Pavla?
I'll second.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavla?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
T, Emergent Human Resource Items. Can I get them over?
I'll move it.
Mr. Pavla?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries. T, Emergent Human Resource Items. Can I get them over? Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Any discussion on the education items? Go, please.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavla?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Final. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get them over?
I'll move it.
Mr. Pavla?
I'll second.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Okay. Business? I'll let you go. You want to speak on the budget right now?
Real quick.
Okay, go right ahead.
Just real quick for the board and the people in attendance. Yesterday, there was an article in the newspaper about the state aid formula with the idea that used data that was from 2018. My association has been in contact with the Department of Education. They reported to us that they will fix the 2019, and when they fix the 2019 and the formula aid, there's only one district right now, it's Pemberton, way down South Jersey that does change their state aid, but no other district or state in New Jersey aids anticipated the change. And that's the information we have from discussion between my, and my association and the Department of Education.
Thank you. That was good news. That was kind of a frightening article. Everyone thought we would have to start over and wonder what our state aid was going to be. Did you want to say something?
Well, just about the coronavirus.
Go right ahead.
Just addressing the commentary on Mr. Klip. We are in contact with the Department of Ed, so we're aware that there could be some changes, but not ready to report on that yet.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are having that meeting for Unsung Heroes, the event at the Passaic County School Board. It'll be at Clifton High School on March 16 from 6 to 9. Please register and come and support our students. We have two that are being honored, as well as students throughout Passaic County. And that's it for me. Ms. Pavla? Mr. Pavla?
Have you seen that example?
Clifton High. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the wrong sheet. Okay, Finance, School Resource. Can I get them over?
I'll move.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Any discussion? Any questions? Go, please. U, Policy. Can I get them over? Oh, I'm sorry. V. No, I'm looking at the wrong sheet. Okay, Finance, School Resource. Can I get them over?
I'll move.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Any discussion? Any questions? Go, please. U, Policy. Can I get them over? Oh, I'm sorry. V. No, I'm looking at the wrong sheet. Okay, Finance, School Resource. Can I get them over?
I'll move.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Any discussion? Any questions? U, Policy. Can I get them over?